Our way back to pushing them.
So, Ms. Barnes, question is, do we need to turn our mics on and off when we speak? Okay, all right, we've got everybody close to getting logged on. Okay, well, we're showing courtesy to those that had a little technical difficulty, so we'll get there. Well, no, I was part of that, too. Ms. Officer, you're online?
I am.
And you can hear us well? Okay, great.
I can.
Awesome, we'll see you here shortly, drive safely, but we'll give just a second. We'll make sure you...
We're live.
Okay. Give Ms. Fowler just another minute here. Okay, all right, so call the May 8th work session, White County Board of Education to order. Appreciate everyone being here tonight. Fair amount of things we need to cover as we start to prepare for our regular meeting at 6:00. In your packet, you provided information regarding tonight's meeting that we'll need to cover. Items will be going over in work session will be to address our items in our consent agenda. As always, just remind you, it is at the board's prerogative if somebody thinks that we need to pull an item out of consent agenda, then we'll pull that out, add that to new business, and have proper discussion on that. Otherwise, if we're all in consent on the items that, items in that agenda, then those will be passed under consent at a regular meeting. So, we'll start going through our packet, the items that are listed there in 6A through J. We have our board meeting minutes and our work session minutes from our April 10th meeting. So, any questions, comments, corrections that need to be made on those items? Okay, if not, then we'll move on to the next item, and that is our budget amendments and transfers. I want to just point out for clarity that we have the budget amendments and transfers that you had found in your folder regarding just our, it's like our federal funds, and there may be a general purpose fund amendment and transfer just under normal business. When we get into our main agenda during our regular meeting, we'll be having to look at the summer school budget. And so, you were given a snapshot from what was submitted to the state for those costs. Those dollars will be coming for the state to cover the cost of our summer school program. But additionally, what has been added is our, the budget amendment transfers in this form, which apply to Ms. Ally and her getting approval for her to make those changes in general ledger, so that way we can have the money appropriated and in place, and they can start drawing on that as we will not meet before our next meeting, summer school will have already started, so we'll need to get that approved tonight. But, and so there will be two budget amendments that will come up in our item number 11 on our regular agenda, but for tonight, we have budget amendments and transfers for our sub-fund, our, this federal fund, 142. So, let Mr. D. speak to that, and he can answer what those monies are going to be used for.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just to make this, sorry, making this a little more confusing. There's actually three budget amendments that were added today, and one of those may need to be a new business item. That is Fund 142 federal programs, this sub-fund 432, which is 21st Century. We've moved $5,000 transfer over to salaries needed to finish the year, so coming out of other supplies and materials. So, if that pleases the board, we may need to move that one to new business, or however the board wants to do it, because those were added all at once. The other two budgets that were added, excuse me, amendments that were added are the breakdowns for summer programming. So, we didn't have the budget amendments at the time when we put this in your folder, but you, what you were looking at were the E-Plan budgets for summer programming. So, now it's the same dollar amounts, just moved into the budgetary form that you see here, the amendment form. So, I didn't create a new line item for that. They're just, this is just the new format, or the regular format that you're used to for the budget amendments. But I did add that other one, I forgot that came in with 21st Century for $5,000. So, however the board wants to deal with that one this evening would be appreciated, because we're trying to close out that program for the end of the year.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So, that was not included in the budget amendments under 6B?
That's, that's correct.
So, there's a separate file in here?
Correct, it's in 10, excuse me, 14A, thank you. It's the first one in 14A. So, the amount of $5,000, we're transferring funds out of materials and supplies over to staff salaries.
Okay, I totally understand. So, let's make a note, we can just, since that wasn't in our packet before we, before we preparing for this meeting, let's pull that budget amendment out, we'll put that under new business, and we'll deal with that at that time, given that we didn't have a chance to, to review and ask questions on that. Okay, so you can make that on the file, change to our agenda?
Yes, I will, I sure will. Would you like me to go back now and address the actual 6B budgets?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Okay, all right, so going back to the original budget amendments on item 6B, you have $3,400 in federal fund 142, sub-fund 102, Title I, this is transferring needed funds into the category for retirement and staff development, so pulling that out of unused funds for educational assistance. Next, we have federal fund 142, sub-fund 411, this is Title IV funds, transferring additional funds needed for substitute teachers, and this is an amount of $446. These are some cleanup end-of-the-year type of budget amendments. I'll be glad to answer any questions, but I'll keep moving. Next is federal program sub-fund 432, and the amount of $2,000, transferring funds for salaries needed for finishing out the school year, moving it from staff development in-service training to salaries. And last, again, Fund 142, the sub-fund 801, it's a CTE Perkins grant. This is an amount of $11,589.68, cleaning up end-of-the-year using leftover funds to purchase ag equipment for the ag department. So, those are the budget amendments in there, and again, just transferring funds from one line item to the other as we clean up line items at the end of the year.
So, just one question, what equipment are we purchasing for the ag department?
I will get that answer for you shortly, I'll ask Mr. Ward, he's not here at the time, but I don't, I will find out exactly what's being purchased there.
All right, any questions, comments for our director on the budget amendments? Okay, then we'll move on. Last, last month, we passed on first reading amendment to policy 3202, 3202. That was just some language changing on that policy in line 18, Principal or Designee shall regularly check the quantity locations and conditions of fire extinguishers, and shall give all school personnel instruction time on how to properly use those fire extinguishers. So, we will be adding Principal or Designee to that, and that will be our policy. If, if there's no objection, that policy will be approved on the second reading under consent, and will go into effect after, after tonight's meeting. Any questions on that policy? Okay, next item on that was, we are to be reviewing Section 4 policies, and I apologize for being negligent on getting you assignments out for that, but I can assure you that will happen, and we'll be looking at doing our annual review of Section 4 policies. So, be, be on the lookout for, for that, that notice from me coming out. Next, we were given a maintenance report for the month of May, so have, everybody had a chance to review that, any questions for our director?
I did, I did have one question on the, on the maintenance report. What, what is the lab renovation, the chemistry element renovation consistent of? I know you have natural gas plumbing and all that stuff, but is it just to the point that the school is in need of a, of an update?
Yes, it probably hasn't changed much since...
I was there.
You, I wasn't going to say that, but yeah, yeah, it hasn't changed in a long time. But, the, it is, it's, some of those items are original to that, to that building, so...
So, you're saying that Harvey Roberts probably was there whenever those items were installed?
Yes, we're, we are removing all of the tables, all the workstations, we're going to, we're going to flush out the plumbing for the gas and water lines, we're going to redo the floor, the walls, all the cabinetry, it's going to be a full restoration. Hats off to Mr. Martin, Wesley Martin, who's the chair of the department, he brought me a proposal over a year ago, and has been very patient as we work through this process of funding this, and he has also, as you'll see later on, secured some grant money to help with this, so he's done a good job of planning that out, and so they'll get started as soon as school releases and start working on a full renovation of that space.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. McDonald, the table that you carved your initials on is probably gonna be gone, just saying. All right, any other questions regarding our maintenance report? Okay, then next we'll go to school report that was submitted to you, all the, all the schools and district gave a report. I think it's safe to say that they're glad that testing is over, and a lot of, a lot of, know a lot of work went into that and getting that done, and, and they're excited for festivities as they start approaching the end of the year. Anything regarding our school report? All right, then next we'll go to our budget report, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the month of April, the county added approximately 300,000 to its cash reserve balance across all funds. Additionally, during this time, property tax collections cross 100% of budgeted revenue estimates. As of April 30th, 2025, we have collected 100.06% of the tax year 2024 property taxes. We continue to monitor the local option sales tax revenue closely. During the month of April of 2025, receipts were slightly below that of April 2024 across all statuses. I hope I said that correct yet. Fortunately, sales tax revenues have not declined significantly, however, we are certainly not seeing the growth that had characterized the past five years. White County has historically budgeted local option sales tax revenues conservatively, so we do not anticipate this lack of growth in this revenue becoming a major budgetary issue. We will continue to monitor this revenue stream closely in the coming months. The General Purpose School Fund has continued its positive financial trend during the month of April. Revenue growth over the previous fiscal year continues to outpace expenditure growth, and at the close of April, the fund had posted 4.8 million more in revenues than expenditures, which is slightly up over April of 2024. Presently, we have no significant concerns regarding this fund, and anticipate being able to increase the fund balance at a similar rate as last year when the books were closed at June 30. Expenditures in the School Federal Projects Fund will start to wind down during the month of May, as we prepare to close out the various grants by June 30. The board should expect to see a flurry of budget amendments requests presented as the staff work to reallocate funds, so they may use, they may be used on program activities prior to expiration. The Central Cafeteria Fund continues to trend in a positive direction. During the month of April, the School Nutrition Department was able to cooperatively bid with other surrounding districts for non-food and chemical products. The bid resulted in an award to a new vendor which will provide these products and services for the upcoming fiscal year. Also, in April, the department was able to negotiate a renewal to the milk and milk products contract for fiscal year '26. Overall, the district remains healthy and appears on track for a good fiscal year close.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments regarding our budget report? Again, do appreciate Mr. Markham for providing us with this level of detailed information, and it's good to know that we're trending in the right, right direction. I also like to recognize staff and, and our, and all of our school administrators, the fact that doesn't appear that everybody's spending to the budget, so that's, that's good, that gives us options to, opportunity to put money back, and so appreciate that frugality of spending. Any, any other questions, comments for budget report? So next we'll go to Ms. Douglas on anything to report from TLN.
Some of the items of interest this month, SB 143 is a bill that requires that the students' report cards now include their current reading level. The Success Sequence Bill, legislature passed the bill requiring public schools to teach students that the keys to success are to graduate high school, enter the workforce or military, or pursue post-secondary education, marry, and then have children. They want it taught in that order. Cell phones, I think we brought that up last meeting as well, a ban on cell phones in public school classrooms is set to take effect starting the '25-'26 school year. Students can use with teacher permission, emergencies, or for managing their health, tracking that, such as diabetes. And I do know we will be discussing more of that. The elementary recess time, it will increase the required amount of recess in elementary schools from two hours per week to 40 minutes per day, an increase of about 16 minutes per day, and more than an hour extra per week. Also, merit-based pay, it is now allowing school districts, if they choose, they can implement a merit-based pay structure for high-performing teachers. The bill SB 0836, that allows Tennessee schools to charge tuition or deny enrollment to undocumented students, is dead for the year. And lastly, the 114th General Assembly adjourned on Tuesday, April 22nd, and will reconvene at 12 o'clock noon on Tuesday, January 13th, 2026.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Douglas, for, for that report. Any questions, Ms. Douglas, about any of the legislation that, that was mentioned?
I don't know if it's for Ms. Douglas, but more than, more likely be for Mr. Drumbarger. Just the, the recess time, what's that gonna do to our instruction time in the classroom for our teachers, and how's that gonna be addressed across the district?
So I already have, it's gonna come out of instruction time. There's just no more minutes in the day, and we keep conveying this to our legislators that they've already filled every minute of the day with various items. And so every time that they add something, it's gotta take away from something else. So to answer your question, it's gonna come out of instruction time, so we're working on how that's gonna work. It's additional about 15 minutes a day, so it's gonna come from maybe some of the RTI time, and certainly maybe ELA in math, we're gonna have to pull some minutes to make that happen. What's important to note, I think, from our standpoint, is that we really want to try and stay true to our elementary school schedule, which we think is very good. We've run that, I think, now for 18 years. It's one of the best things that we've, you can't name another thing in public education that's lasted 18 years. So I was gonna say, except for Ms. Gurley, she's about 50, but, but, yeah, yeah, no, no, and she's going strong. No, but in all seriousness, it's a great schedule. Other, other districts, you know, are trying to copy, are envious of that. We've been able to implement everything that the state has handed down through that schedule, so we're trying to stay true to that, but those minutes are gonna come from instruction time. You know, personally, I think if, you know, at 3 o'clock, you can go and have as much recess as you want to, but legislators keep forcing these things in, there's just no more minutes in the day. But we have set our schedules, I've asked elementary principals to weigh in and, and look at their schedules and come up with various versions, and so we're, we're taking that input right now, and then we'll sit down with principals and curriculum and look at the best options to, you know, serve our students and still meet the, the letter of the law.
Okay, well, I know the legislation, legislators have, you know, they tell us what to do, but they don't, or tell the, the school districts and administrators what to do on this end, but they're not in this every day, and like you guys are, and they don't see the adverse effects that it has on our students and our teachers, and the stress level that they're already under. I just, I, I wish they would get more in tune with what's going on, on the local level, and not just passing things on the state level that they don't have any idea of what's happening.
I agree, and if I could, Mr. Chairman, just have one comment there, I wanna make it clear, we're not against extra recess. I mean, we're all for that, we think our students need it, we think, you know, we think that it's a, it's a good thing, but the, the truth remains, there's just no more time in the day, so it comes from somewhere. And what's really compounding that problem is when you take away from instruction time, that instruction time already has considerable accountability tagged to it, attached to it. And so now you're still requiring the same math scores, but you're giving us less time to do it. So that's where the frustration comes. We're certainly in favor of kids having recess, and we're certainly in favor of them having a, a good lunch period, and all the fun things that go on with school, but it, it comes at a cost for academics which still have considerable accountability.
Any other legislative questions? Of course, as typical, TSB will do, do a great job this summer in educating us and providing some detail of the legislation that will, by that time, the time we hear it, unless you go to the June meeting, will already have taken effect. So we'll get, we'll get some, some insight on that from, from a, from a legal perspective, and, and what we may do or may not have to do as far as board goes, but trust that our administrator under director's leadership is, is on top of that, and, and well aware of what needs to happen for us to be compliant going into the next, the next school period. All right, if nothing else on TLN, then we'll go to our threat assessment report, and that was included in your packet. Several threats listed and undemed credible, and, and all closed, so a clean report there. Then we have update on our applicants and interviews and hiring. Looks like, if I read this correctly, you probably jumped the gun and tried to make offers, and you provided this information to us in our, our weekly report, but trying to get that done in, in March or soon, to be able to avoid, try to get ahead and get the best candidates as soon as you can. So is that process, still feel good about where we are personnel-wise heading into next year?
Yes, sir, we feel very good at this point where we are with hiring. We feel, knock on wood, most of our teaching positions are, are confirmed at this point. We have some other interviews going on that could shuffle some of that, but overall, we feel good about that. Several staff positions remain to be filled, but the hiring season now for teachers is March into April, where it used to be June. So it's just if, there's not that many teachers out there, so you have to get on them early and often, and so, but we feel good at this point where we are in the process.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding personnel, our personnel report? Okay, and then, excuse me, we've had, just have a couple of travel requests that'll be taking place over the, over the summer that come in. We have TSA requesting travel to Nashville, June 27th through July 1st for a national conference, and then the junior ROTC, White County High School Junior ROTC, request travel to Greenville, Kentucky, May 28th through June 1st for a summer camp. That information was in your, in your packet, has administrative, administrative approvals, so all of that be lacking would be ours. Any questions on those travel requests? Okay, if, if not, the, as we look at our, our agenda, and as you're thinking about in our upcoming meeting, we've got several items on there regarding some, some housekeeping. I have a couple of requests that were on there. I think one request was, we take a look at our board calendar for '25-'26 school year, and then also reviewing of, and some discussion on Policy 6312, as that was mentioned by Ms. Douglas, that was, we did have some legislation coming out that may affect that policy. We'll have a chance to discuss that in our regular, regular meeting, and then also review the, the input we got from the, our director's evaluation. I appreciate everyone moving on that to, to get that done. So anything else you wanna address in this work session before we turn for our regular meeting? Mr. D?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I got some information going back to the budget amendment for the CTE Perkins Basic Grant, that's Fund 142, Sub-Fund 801. That $11,589.68 is going towards ag equipment, particularly a chicken tractor, which is basically a chicken coop on wheels, and several other items that will go along with that process for the production of meat birds. So had to solicit some background information there, but that is what I'm being told the funds are being used for.
So I might look around, the poultry industry is alive and well by, by inspiring entrepreneurs, and if you're, if you're paying attention as you drive throughout the countryside, you're liable to pick up eggs at half price, as my daughter has shown me. So anyway, no, that's good, that, that's, that's good to know what that's, that's going for. All right, anything else, any board members that you think we need to bring up at this time while we have a minute?
I was wondering on this next thing, are we gonna discuss this Teachers Freedom Act thing, or is that, what have we decided? We was gonna decide on all teachers?
Yes, ma'am, that's ESA bonus resolution, so yes, that'll be what we discuss, and that, there's a copy of the resolution, and so we'll, we'll be having our discussion on that in our regular meeting. Okay, anything else? All right, well then we'll adjourn to, to our 6 o'clock regular meeting, okay? Thank you. Thank you.
We'll get, we'll get started here in just, just a minute or so, okay? So it's be our two-minute warning. All right, it's six o'clock and I'd like to call the May eighth meeting of the White County Board of Education to order. If you would, please stand. I'm going to ask Ms. Isabella Sackett to lead us in a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Sackett. We appreciate you leading us in the pledge and appreciate everyone's attendance here tonight and your interest in the Business and White County Board of Education. This is Teachers Appreciation Week and so on behalf of the board, I'd just like to publicly recognize all of our teachers and aides for your hard work this year and you make the difference in the lives of our students. And just want you to know, we appreciate you and your, your hard work and your commitment to education. So on tonight's meeting, we have a variety of items that we want to cover, some of those housekeeping related. We do have a line item on our agenda for regarding our policy sixty-three twelve regarding electronic devices. And we're also going to be reviewing the results from our director's evaluation. Tennessee Code to Annotate and Board Policy fourteen hundred states that every meeting of the board is open to the public except where law allows a closed session. The agenda for the board meetings are posted on the district's website at www dot whitecoastschools dot net at least three days prior to each meeting. State statute requires that each meeting agenda include an item reserved for public comment. Sign-up sheet is made available prior to the beginning of the regular meeting. Individuals who have signed up prior to the start of the meeting may speak, to speak, will be recognized in the order listed on the sign-up sheet at the point in the agenda designated for public comment. Board meetings are streamed with the help of Warrior Media for live or recorded viewing and links are provided on the district website. Attending and/or speaking during tonight's meeting implies consent for comments and appearances to be used. So before we consider approving tonight's agenda, is there any board member that might have a conflict of interest on the items being proposed?
Mr. Chairman, as I do each and every month, nothing on the agenda tonight that would institute a conflict of interest for me with my wife being a teacher in the system. Just want to make it a public record and known that the opinions that you hear from me tonight are mine and mine alone and are just in the best interest of the school district.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Chairman, my husband works in the school system, so, but there's nothing on the agenda tonight that should be a conflict and so my opinions are my own.
Thank you, Ms. Officer.
My esteemed colleagues, my wife is also an employee of the high school. And again, nothing on the agenda, I believe constitutes a conflict of interest, but my opinions are mine and mine alone.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. So Ms. Sims, please let the minutes state that Mr. McDonald, Ms. Officer, and Mr. Smith all indicated they employees working within the district, but no items on the agenda would constitute a conflict for them. So with that being said, we will move to our next agenda item and that's approval for the agenda for tonight's meeting. Agenda has been posted. There is one addition that we have made and that's a budget amendment for, in, under new business sent us a budget amendment for our sub-fund, one forty-two, fund, one forty-two, sub-fund four thirty-two and that's some, some monies regarding our Twenty-First Century program. That was, everyone was made aware of that in our work session. That would be the only change to tonight's agenda that's been proposed. So this time I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. McDonald. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Items under consent agenda tonight are the approval for the minutes from our meetings held on April tenth. That was our work session along with our regular meeting. We did have some budget amendments and transfers that were reviewed. We will be having a review of, second reading of policy amendment to policy thirty-two oh two. And then this is, notice that this is our review of section four policies this month. We had maintenance report, our school report, budget report. For the, for the record, the school is in, in good financial standings at this point during our budget cycle. We had our T L N report, threat assessment report, our personnel reports. We will also, in our consent agenda, will be approving two travel requests for White County High School groups, TSA and junior ROTC. So those were items that were discussed in consent in our work session. No, no items were recommended to be pulled out. So with that, it will not require a motion or a second, so we will vote for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is the ESA bonus resolution. So as you're aware, we've had these discussions on previous, previous meetings. State legislature passed what is known as the Educational Freedom Act of twenty twenty-five. It includes a provision for providing a one-time bonus of no less than two thousand dollars to public schoolteachers in the state. And as a board, we have to acknowledge that, affirm our intent to participate in that section of the legislation so that the teachers would receive those bonuses. There is a draft copy of the resolution that is very similar to the ones that, that we have had out there for, just for your information purposes, as we knew that we would be leading up to this time as a board, we, to pass resolution. We figured that, just given the time of where this, where this, we're at in our, our planning and, and budget cycle for, for next year, that this is an item that we'd want to take up tonight. So this time I'll pause and see if there's any questions or discussion you would like to have about this matter or the resolution itself.
I guess, Mr. D., just for clarity, this is for K through twelve teachers only, correct?
I believe it included pre-K, but it, it, there's a definition by the state that define teachers. It's by their definition of teachers, which is those that have students in front of them more than half of the day and for a hundred and twenty days.
Okay, so is there any provisions that, I guess, we can do to recognize all of our aides? The ones that are in the classrooms with those teachers all the times, you know, are your RTI, your counselors, those folks? Is there something that we can do as a board? I know we're in, in the thick of budget things, but is there some kind of bonus that we can include in that to include everybody from top to bottom? Cafeteria staff, bus drivers, doesn't matter, anybody, because they all are out there in the thick of things every day.
I, I agree and we applaud all those efforts. We looked at that. That was something, you know, we've, as a district, we've tried to do is winning and losing as a team. And so we looked at that and there was also some feedback that I received that sometimes, you know, it's maybe good to reward those folks for which the award was given. And, you know, we've recognized those people. We've had, you know, we tried to do some differentiated pay in the past where we recognized maybe tested subjects and things like that. We had some pushback on that because people felt undervalued in other subjects. So this money, and then there was also a concern too of the precedent sets. You know, this is money that was sent from the state as part, well, we'll get into the politics of that, but it was, it was part of the, the Education Freedom Act, which I had, some teachers said that they didn't want the money because they felt like it was a bribe to get people to support this, the voucher bill. So there's a lot of different opinions on that, but we can do whatever the board wants to do as far as that goes. But it's going to cost the local, the local school system, you know, a lot of money, maybe in the hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to give a bonus of some sort to everybody that's not included in this. And then there's also the consideration of setting a precedent that every time that the state gives a bonus to someone, that the county is going to match that. So those were the concerns and so at this time, you know, the recommendation I had for the board was it's award that to everyone that was included in that definition. That's who the award, this bonus will go to. And as far as the county goes, we're, we're budgeting for pay raises for all of our staff and all of our teachers for next year. So that's what the local will be doing. This is just designated to those that the state has defined as teachers under their definition.
Okay, thank you.
Got a question. So did you say it included the pre-K teachers?
It does. I think the original language of the bill did not, but I, we've got clarification that it does.
Okay, so is there a way to get an amount that it may include the aides? And I'm not, by no means trying to get around the cafeteria workers or the bus drivers, but they're not hands-on in the classroom as much time as the aides are.
So if we said aides, would we say counselors and administrators too?
No, I'm just saying aides, that's in the classroom, hands-on with the students.
So as I said earlier, we can do whatever the board would like to do there. What I'm suggesting, what I'm proposing tonight is that it's paid exactly for the money that's come in for that purpose. But we can do whatever the board would, would, would choose for us to look at. I can get those numbers and, but, and we ran some numbers, but it, to do the two thousand dollar bonus and if a month's taken, it's twenty-three hundred and some dollars. Is that correct that it, so it comes out so that there's actually two thousand? I think I saw that number. So it actually, so it's not two thousand dollars minus the taxes. The idea was that it was supposed to be two thousand dollars. But to do that for every staff member that's not included in this would be hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. And, you know, one of the things we're going to talk about in my director's evaluation a little bit is the fact that I'm not looking at ways to save enough money. So, you know, but that, but if, it's the board's prerogative that we look at that. I'd be, I'm more than willing to, to get those numbers.
So i-if I could interject here. What we're doing tonight is that we are passing, or we, we would, are considering a resolution by this board that we will participate in the one-time bonus for the public school teachers. And this is going to be a twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six payout?
It won't be paid out and it technically is from this school year, based on this school year, but the monies, monies won't be released until after July one.
So that would show up in the budget for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six?
Yes.
Okay, so the state will provide us that money and that would be incoming funds that we would budget amend and then pay out. So the, the matter on the table that we're considering tonight is if we're going to participate in, if we're going to take the funds received from the state and we're going to flow those through to the individuals that it's intended to, and that's the licensed teachers spending. We're saying pre-K through twelve, fifty percent time, instructional time for a hundred and twenty days of the year. So it does have parameters set. So that's what we're considering. I think your discussion on- I think your discussion on how do we, how do we recognize others in, in, in our district who contribute to the educational process, I think it's, it's, it's valid. I think it's also valid that we consider, you know, longer-term impacts on something like this. And I think that would probably be best served for discussion at another meeting and probably get that information to us for, as we prepare for budget for 2025, 2026. I know that you've done that before, but I would suggest that if any board member has specific information, as Ms. Fowler stated, what would be the cost if you included all aides, if I heard you correctly, in, in, including them in a, in a payout? I think we would, we would have that part of our budget discussion. Because tonight, it's, it's, the, the matter in front of us is, are we as, as a board going to, let it be known to the state, that we resolved that we will affirm our intent to participate in this, this part of the legislation of the Education Freedom Act 2025?
Mr. Chairman, two quick things. In that production of data, if you could look at it from different thresholds, if it were to be a $500 bonus, a $1,000 bonus, $1,500 for, for all staff, because I think all staff, teachers included, provide value to the students' experience, educational experience. Second thing, I, I think I mentioned this at a previous board meeting, I would like to amend the resolution to where it says, graduate prepared to enter a post-secondary institution, comma, the military, armed forces, or the workforce. I know that may be a minor addition to the resolution, but I think it speaks to the students that have, or taken that option to, to serve.
Hey, so, Mr. Smith, you're saying you have some language clarification you'd like to make that resolution?
That's correct.
So I'm going to suggest if, if we could, if we could do this in, in this manner, I think this is the right, the proper way to, to go with this. We, when we have discussion, it will, if somebody brings a motion to approve this resolution, we have discussion. If you could make a motion to make your amendment then, we'll vote on your amendment, then we'll vote on the resolution as amended. Ms. Fowler?
Does this have to be voted on tonight, or could we do it? Okay.
Yes, I don't, imagine they can't see my head shaking on, on, or hear it on the, on the, anyway, yes, it does have to be approved. We have to submit this by June 1st, or we are not eligible to receive those funds.
So, I know we're going to have our budget one. Is, are we allowed to maybe get some numbers and move it to the budget one for the 20?
Yes, Ms. Fowler, and I apologize if I wasn't clear on that. The, if we would want, if we as board would consider some of the things that were suggested about recognizing other, other contributors in the, to the educational process of the students, if we wanted to consider that, then what I'm going to suggest is that board members, you, you ask Mr. D. to compile various scenarios of what you'd like to see, and that we would bring that up in our discussion as we start preparing our 25, 26 budget, because we would not pay those funds out of this year's budget. It would be a next year's budget item if we chose to do anything.
I've had some teachers actually reach out to me because they feel like the aides need to be included in this, because they're a very big part.
And I appreciate that, and appreciate teachers willing to recognize the role that aides, aides play. Again, aides weren't included in the state legis, the, in the, the legislation that was passed, and so we're just dealing with the legislation. And so we can address that at the, at, at the appropriate time. And I'm suggesting that would be in budget. Any other comments, questions? Okay, so we understand the purpose of the resolution and why we're, it's being brought to us tonight. So this time I'd entertain a motion to pass the resolution by the White County Board of Education to participate, and our intent to participate in the Educational Freedom Act of 2025 and its one-time bonus to the teachers of public schools. You have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I think Ms. Sackett may have had, no? Okay.
Okay. Okay, so entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Smith, have a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Douglas, now discussion. And we're discussing the resolution itself.
I, I think it needs to be noted that this is just section four of the Education Freedom Act and not the entire act. I think that's, needs to be made public, that this is only one section of that huge bill that was talked about in the, in the legislature this year.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald, and I'll, if I could just reiterate what, what you said, that this resolution is, and if you don't mind if you indulge me, I'll just, I'll just read it for the record. It's a resolution by the White County Board of Education. Whereas the White County Board, Board of Education is charged with governing the school system so that students receive the best educational opportunities in order to graduate prepared to enter a post-secondary institution or the workforce. And whereas the Education Freedom Act of 2025 includes a provision for providing a one-time bonus of no less than $2,000 to public school teachers in the state. And whereas section four of the Education Freedom Act 2025 requires that local boards of education for an ELL, ELEA seeking to participate in section four of the proposed act must affirm its intent to participate by a resolution in order to receive state funds to issue these bonuses. Therefore, be it resolved that the White County Board of Education affirms its intent to participate in section four of the Education Freedom Act of 2025 relative to the bonuses for the teachers. So that would provide the clarity that we are just affirming our, our intent to participate in the bonus, in the bonus program and not taking a position on the bill as whole.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could offer an amendment to the first paragraph, to where it would read, White County Board of Education is charged with governing the school system so that all students receive the best educational opportunities in order to graduate prepared to enter a post-secondary institution, comma, the workforce, comma, or armed forces.
Okay, so Mr. Smith is, you're making that as a motion, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, so Mr. Smith has made a motion to change the language of the, of the resolution to include post-secondary institution, workforce, and military. So we would be adding military to that first paragraph. So that's the, the motion to amend. Do I have a second?
Second.
Excuse me, second by Mr. McDonald, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So with that amendment, paragraph one would, does it, would, would state post-secondary institution, workforce, and/or military. So that's, would be the amendment. So now we will, we have a, a motion and a second for approving the resolution. Are there any other discussions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, all right, so next we'll move to item on our agenda, and that's the 2025, 26 school board meeting calendar. Excuse me. So we get into the season where we'll have to start planning our meetings for next year. And it's been some discussion about the dates. The dates are primarily set with the, within policy of the second Thursday in, of the month. However, we have made some adjustments to accommodate breaks, not to be holding board meetings during, during breaks, such as spring break and fall break. But there has been some discussion about the location, locations. And so, Mr. McDonald, you brought that up. I'd like to give you a chance to speak to that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you a chance, clear your throat.
Thank you.
No, Mr. Mr. Chairman, thank you for, for that and allowing me to, to bring this forward. We, we have this great boardroom here. Don't get me wrong, I love going and seeing our, our schools and seeing our principals, but there's a lot of work that goes on to make this meeting happen at a satellite location. Our IT department has to pack up all of these cameras and microphones and, and things. I, I would just like to see us make the, and, and make this meeting be held at the Board of Education every month, and be able to recognize our schools just as we do, recognize our schools here during this meeting, you know, whether we, we make the, the first meeting of the month, the high school, you know, high school appreciation month for our meeting and recognize those folks. But I would like for us to take some work off of our IT department, and instead of having to get all of this equipment to, to a satellite location, we can get all these cameras mounted on the wall and get the microphones set up to where it would be a, an easy transition for them to come in and, and turn everything on and be as seamless as possible. And also take some work off of our principals and our, and our teachers and administrators at those schools, instead of having to stay till seven or eight o'clock at a, on a, you know, once a month on a night, that they could be home with their families. So I would just, I would like to, I guess, put in a form of motion that our school board meeting calendar for 25, 26 be, all meetings be held here in the Robinson McBride boardroom at the Board of Education building.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. So a motion on the floor that location number 2025, 2026 school board meetings be held here at the Robinson McBride board meeting here at the Board of Education Central Office.
One thing, one thing, Mr. Chairman, I don't want the teachers and the, and administrators at, at our schools to know that we don't want to come see them. We just want to take a little work off of them and, and make their lives a little easier. But we can go visit those schools at, at any time during the, during the week. So that would be my only other comment for that.
Okay, duly noted, and, but I don't think I'm going to try to include that in expression of your motion. So I have a motion that the 2025, 2026 school year board meeting calendar has the Board of Education Central Office as our meeting location. Have a motion, do I have a second? Second, Ms. Fowler, any discussion? Comments? Echo Mr. McDonald's statement about appreciating the work of Ms. Rust and Ms. Barnes for accommodating us on this, on our field trips, and just amazed at their ability to do that and do that in a, a way where the technology all comes together.
I, I will say this, that we are the only district that I can find that does field trips each month to their school. So nobody around us has a, has a meeting at their schools. So we, we are one of the last.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. So I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I, I think if we don't go to the schools, we have to be more intentional. I'll, I'll say I have to be more intentional about getting out and seeing the schools than, than what I've done so far. So that's on me, not that I'm implicating anybody else, but.
They'll welcome, they'll welcome you with open arms.
Yep.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is review of policy 6312, and that's the use of personal communications electronic devices in our, in our district. We do have policy regarding those, those personal communication electronic devices. But we also know that legislation that has recently passed may impact our policy. But then we also know that this is, some other districts are taking a different approach, and so we're going to have a little discussion on that tonight. I do know that, been asked that Ms. Amy Hawkins come and speak to us regarding this subject from a high school's perspective, but I'm going to, this time, give Mr. Mr. D. the opportunity to, to lead us in this, into this discussion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is obviously an endeavor that some school systems have taken upon themselves, and this new law really doesn't impact our policy that much. We already had a policy in place that restricted cellphone use during instruction time. As I shared with the board in the past, the way I've approached that is, you know, until the high school tells me that it was a, a huge problem, I was allowing them to run their school and handle that accordingly. And that's not what I'm hearing. Now, do cellphones cause disruptions? Absolutely. Is it distraction sometimes? Yes, but I'm not hearing overwhelmingly from the high school and from teachers that they can't teach class because of cellphone use or inappropriate cellphone use. So our policy doesn't necessarily have to change according to this law. We have that already in place. But there, we did solicit feedback from parents and students. That is in your packet. You know, teachers overwhelmingly say no cellphones. The statistics, students say overwhelmingly yes, cellphones, and parents are split somewhere in the middle and divided on the issue. Lot of conversation about parents being able to get a hold of their students throughout the day. And so there's, there's varying opinions on that. But again, from the conversation I've had with administrators, and Ms. Hawkins is here to answer any questions. Thank you, Ms. Hawkins, for being here this evening. If you have any questions specifically from the high school administration, you know, that's not what I'm hearing as the director, is that this is a policy that necessarily needs changed right now. You know, and when we look at students, you know, a good point was brought up, I think, Ms. Hawkins, and I actually talked about this, was, you know, we're looking at ways to keep our students engaged and happy at school. And I think when they, when 80% say, don't take our cellphones, and you take their cellphones, that's, we're, we're, you know, we're losing students in a lot of different ways right now, and so that's a consideration as a, you know, one more thing that might sway some folks to, to leave our public schools. So again, not hearing that that's an issue that we need to tackle right now. I think our current policy seems to be doing its job, and, and from, in my discussions with them. And so that's my, those are my thoughts on the subject. I, you know, romantically, as a parent, I like the idea of not having them at all in the building, but as a director, I'm not hearing that it's a problem that we need to solve right now at White County High School.
Thank you, Mr. D. Ms. Hawkins, did you come with anything prepared you'd like to share with us? But you can give us some, some insight. I would, would certainly like to recognize you. And you will have to turn the microphone on when you come up.
If I may, while she's approaching the mic. Our current policy is in line with the current legislation, correct?
So we've had about 700 discipline referrals over the course of the year. Out of those, when we checked it two weeks ago, I believe, only 60 were cellphone violations. Currently, our policy, our procedure is that students are not allowed to have cellphones in the classroom. They can have them in the hallways, in the cafeterias. And it's really, we are not seeing issues with students using them in an inappropriate way during the school day. Does it happen? Yes, but as far as discipline goes, we've not had a lot of that going on. Most of the issues we have with cellphones are using social media sites at home. So they're going to come in and they're going to tell us that somebody posted something on Snapchat at home, so we can't control that already. As far as a cellphone ban, our policy is actually, we, well, we went to, we were going to go to Warren County, and our policy, our number one violation, our number one punishment is actually more harsh than what they have right now with their cellphone ban. So we were going to go visit, and then when I talked to one of their assistant principals, we were really right in line with what their policy says. We just don't take them up from students. So we don't, as an administrative team, we don't see a need for a cellphone ban.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Any questions from, for, for our guests?
It may not necessarily be from Ms. Hawkins, but so are the students allowed to have them on their person, like for guys, have them in their pockets, or?
Yes.
I got a question. So I'm hearing different from the teachers, that they want a cellphone ban on them. And I'm one of the old schools that if I wanted to get in touch with my kids, I'm going to call the school. I don't feel like a parent should be reaching out to the child on a cellphone when you're in school.
And we do have some teachers who say self, they want a cellphone ban. And, and what teachers feel, those teachers feel that if, if we what teachers feel, those teachers feel that if, if we say there's a cellphone ban, there's, then they can just put that on the school board, that the school board says this. But there are also teachers who, like Mr. D said, they've talked to their students, and we have students who are saying, "I wouldn't come to school if I couldn't have my phone." And not because they want to use it during the school day, um, and not because their parents are contacting them, but it's just where, where it is right now.
Other questions, comments for Ms. Hawkins, or anything about the subject?
I, uh, I know that some of the other places has some kind of, uh, policy where they're not allowed to take them in their class. They're stored in a pouch or in their locker or something like that. That would probably be somewhere in the middle, correct? Where they couldn't be like cheating on a test or, uh, you know, asking their friends a answer on a test or something like that if they didn't actually have them on their person.
Right. Some, some, um, districts are doing that. What most of our teachers do is they have a pouch area in their classroom where they, the students turn their phone in, in the classroom. So, like, our math department overwhelmingly, that's the system that they use, and they really are concerned about cheating on, in the classroom. But that's the, that's what they use, is they have a, like a shoe pouch, and students, and they're numbered, and students, it, in the math department, they actually have a calculator there. They trade the calculator out for their phone, and that's how they pick their calculator up. I think Ms., I think Bella could talk on that as well.
I think, uh, you know, if every classroom had that, that they could designate a place for their cellphone, because, um, when they get out in the workforce, they're not gonna be able to be glued to their cellphone, and they need to be separating. They're gonna have separation anxiety.
Right. And our policy is that there are not to be cellphones in the classroom. So, that is our policy.
So, um, we, uh, thank you for those comments, Ms. Hawkins. We, we did do a, a survey, and, um, and you, you, uh, those results were posted in your, your folder, and, and as, uh, as it was stated, that, uh, there is a varying degree of what, uh, students and teachers say, and, and also what, what parents say too. We, we have, uh, appreciate the good insight from administrative standpoint, but given the fact that we do have the privilege of having a student representative on our board, I would like, uh, for Ms. Sackett to, to speak to that from, just from a student's perspective, if she doesn't mind.
Yeah. So, um, I think our policy is a good policy. I don't foresee a lot of problems with cellphones, but I'm also not a student that has to have my cellphone on me all the time. I'm fine with putting it up in my backpack or putting it in the calculator's pa- pouch. Um, all of the classrooms that I'm in, I do, uh, put my cellphone up because that's a requirement of the teacher. And also, I think sending the survey out, um, I was working on it in class and just asking one of my teachers, one of the questions before the survey was actually sent out, there were some, there was a lot of student backlash towards me even filling out a survey. So, they were already upset with just a survey going out about whether or not there should or should not be a cellphone ban. And I think that if you have a policy in order that's working well, that you're not seeing many problems with, uh, the students are happy, uh, I wouldn't change it, um, and anger them, I guess. I know that we're trying to benefit them and, and keep them in a good learning environment, but I think that right now you have a good learning environment. So, changing that might, um, make problems that aren't there right now. So, why add problems? And also, I don't think that the results showed an overwhelming amount of teachers that really, really wanted cellphones completely out of there, and, uh, students' opinions and teach, and their parents' opinions were in line. So, I wouldn't change the cellphone policy that we have right now unless we absolutely had to.
Thank you, Ms. Sackett. That's a, a, a good, uh, perspective for us to have. Other comments from board members? I will, uh, take a moment to say that, you know, and I appreciate, uh, Mr. D putting in, um, policies from our neighboring counties. And, uh, if you look at those, and if you, if you look at the, the, their policies that they implement, uh, I think ours is thorough. Uh, not just at high school level, but we also have, uh, uh, cellphones being brought in at elementary schools as well and middle school. Uh, I think, uh, I think our policy is very thorough, and so I appreciate the work that, that went into, uh, putting that together. And the, um, and it does have consequences. It does have some guidelines. It does have parameters in which everybody knows. And if I'm not mistaken, those are also signatures, uh, you sign off on the, uh, student handbook at the beginning of the year that say, "You've read these, you understand these, and you intend to abide by these." Is that correct?
Yes.
So, there is, in a sense, a, uh, a, uh, uh, kind of a, uh, loose contract there, uh, between the students and the, and our district, that this is what we're allowing. And, you know, the expectation is that you, uh, you don't break the contract. Um, so, and when you do that, consequences, and obviously we have those, those listed. So, um, so I, I feel really good about our policy. Um, but unless there was, uh, you know, somebody wanted to, uh, make a motion to, uh, to take any action regarding this, then, um, if, if we'll, we'll entertain it. But otherwise, uh, we'll just ask that administrators, uh, at all levels, make sure that the enforcement's there. And, uh, so that way the policy has, actually has, has a merit. Any comments, discussions, motions?
Just another question. I apologize, but our policy breaks out K through eight and nine through twelve. Are both sections compliant with what the legislation is doing, legislators do? Okay.
Okay. Anything else on this subject? All right, Ms. Hawkins, thank you for joining us and, and for your thorough explanation. Appreciate that. All right. Well, then, uh, if that's, uh, nothing else, we'll move on to our next, uh, item of business. Um, I do appreciate board members you going through the process of, uh, uh, going through our director's evaluation. Um, we do have policy, uh, that was included in your packet, that, uh, policy fifty-eight oh three, uh, says the board shall, uh, review, uh, annually and provide a evaluation of our director of schools. So, we have, uh, just as a reminder, um, we have, uh, we have used, and this year we use, continue to use the same evaluation form that we have, uh, used in the past, that, uh, I guess ever since, uh, Mr. Drunberger's been under, uh, contract with our district. It's a fifty-two question, uh, uh, evaluation, uh, that covers a variety of different, uh, topics. Um, overall leadership, uh, staff and personal relationships, business and finance, strategic, uh, strat, uh, strategic planning skills. And so, uh, we, we did have a, uh, a survey, uh, sent out, or evaluation you provided, and have the composite scores on, uh, category, uh, on questions one through, uh, twenty-three. Uh, composite score was three point one six. On, uh, staff and personal relationships, uh, that was questions twenty-four through thirty-five, composite score was three point oh six. Educational leadership, uh, questions thirty-six through forty-four was, uh, three point one four. Business and finance, uh, three questions, uh, questions forty-five through forty-eight, those are three point, uh, one eight. And then strategic planning skills, questions forty-nine through fifty-two, uh, two point eight nine. So, if I'm not mistaken, a composite score of, uh, a cumulative score of, of all those, uh, around a three point one, uh, around enough if I'm not mistaken. Uh, this is on a four-point scale. So, uh, with, uh, uh, scores of two or lower, uh, they have to, uh, be, uh, provide comments on, on, uh, what, why that would be considered below expectations. And, uh, comments for the director, because if we score in a, a two or lower without any explanation of what we're seeing, that's not, uh, providing adequate feedback for our director to, uh, to make course correction. But three and higher would be considered, uh, meeting expectations. So, uh, I'll pause here just, uh, just for a minute, uh, giving any opportunities for anyone to, uh, comment over our, uh, director's scores.
About, sorry, the director's scores. But I did go back, and in February twenty-two, four, we did make the motion to change the thing. I know we had talked about it before. I just wanted to bring that up.
Yes, ma'am, we did. And we had some discussion about that, um, past twenty-two, four, and I, I looked at that. But we did have a consensus that can, uh, can, came to the consensus, uh, with our director, that he was okay with the, the format that we were using, and he was comfortable with that. But we did come back and ask that the addition was that he would provide objective evidence for us, because, uh, using that, I think it was more of a hindrance to the board that, um, that we, uh, didn't have enough evidence to say how we could make an evalu-, a proper evaluation. And so, this year, the change was that he provided that, uh, objective evidence for each of those questions, and you were provided that information. So, as going through, doing your evaluation, you had something to refer to, um, from what he thought was objective evidence of how he was, he was meeting that. If that's something we want to revisit, um, that would be something that we can, uh, we can have, bring that discussion up again. Uh, this, so this was, would be an evaluation that I would say was different from how we've done it in the past, just because we had that extra amount of resources for us to, uh, to refer to. And, and, and we did have some evidence rather than just being what we, uh, may have discovered on our own.
I do want to say, and, and I appreciate the, uh, the feedback that was given, us getting to read through those questions and, uh, and... Mr. D, I, I want you to know, I, I think you're doing a great job for our district. I, I don't, um, I don't know that we would be where we're at if we had anybody else in that, uh, in that seat. Um, it's a tough job. Couldn't pay me enough money to do it. Not smart enough to do it in the first place, but, uh, I appreciate the, uh, the constructive criticism that you take, um, because there's a lot of people out in the, in the county, in the community that, that love to give construct, constructive criticism. And, uh, I appreciate the way you take it. I appreciate the, the way that you offer, uh, resolution to a lot of those issues, uh, even though when, even when it's hard. Uh, so I, I appreciate that. And, uh, uh, you know, I just, uh, have enjoyed, uh, the time that I've gotten to work on this board and with this board. Uh, so it's, it's not an easy job to sit up here and go through all these, uh, these laws and, and all of these budget numbers. So, um, I appreciate you doing that on a, on a daily basis and, uh, just, uh, continue to do the good work.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Appreciate that. Ms. Douglas, anything you'd like to share? I think I'll probably just go around the table.
I would like to say, um, as a former teacher, um, there's things that I knew already, uh, dealing with education, but this is a whole different side of, of what I ever dealt with. Um, and I've enjoyed it, um, learning a lot. Uh, but I will have to say, I've had some questions along the way, and I could ask a board member or Mr. Drunberger, and everyone's been so good to help, you know, doing this legislative report each month. You know, that's, that's difficult from someone that doesn't know legisla-, legislator. So, I was, um, you know, that, that's been a learning curve for me. Uh, but I do appreciate everyone's work here, and I, I definitely have learned some things along the way, and I appreciate it very much.
Smith?
Yeah. Next, next week will be my thirtieth evaluation at, at Tech, and I've never gone through an extensive evaluation as this. So, the, the evidence that you provided was extremely appreciated, because I think as a board, we, we don't know answers to all of those, whether this is being done by you or by your, your team. So, uh, I, I, I think you do a great job for our school. Um, I think you've done a great job for our school system. So, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Officer?
I agree with Mr. Smith about the extensiveness of this evaluation. Um, I think that you're doing a great job, Ms. Hawkins, for this feedback. But, um, this instrument was very challenging, and so the evidence that you gave, that shows so much more than any number on a piece of paper. And I think you're doing a great job, and I think this board is benefiting from you being in this position.
Stone?
Mr. Drunberger, I know you, uh, went to a lot of work, uh, preparing all your answers, and it was extensive. And I think if we'd went to another evaluation, it would have probably been easier to score, because, like they said, it was very extensive. Um, and I'm also like Mr. McDonald. I hope, uh, any criticism, uh, you take it as constructive.
Fowler?
I just want to say thank you. And I need to apologize, because this week I've had some personal issues, so I didn't get to go over it as well as I probably should have, even though I started it when we got it Monday, and I apologize for that, but had to rush out today. But you do take it well on your shoulders. I'm telling you, you've got some big ones. And, I mean, I do appreciate you. You, you love our teachers and our students, and thank you for what you do.
So, I'm just gonna share a couple of thoughts, um, as I go through and think about your, uh, your performance, uh, Mr. D. One of the things that, uh, stands out to me is, um, you seem to be very, um, uh, very proactive in your, uh, effort to support your team and support our, our district and our staff, uh, particularly when I look at, uh, the updates that you're providing our principals, um, and, and department, from the department heads, uh, shows me the, uh, your ability to, to delegate and, and lean on them for, uh, as subject matter experts, so with those areas, and you not trying to do, uh, take all the burden of every department upon yourself and holding people responsible for that, and then communicating that out throughout the district. Um, your general sessions start the, uh, start the year, I think, is, uh, something that is, uh, whether you did that on your own, uh, when you started, or whether that was something that was carried on. Uh, I do think it, that's a, uh, a very effective way to start the, uh, school year, uh, setting the tone for the upcoming year. So, I, I would commend you for, for that. Um, and I also like to say that I appreciate, uh, you, um, being supportive of, of innovative ways, uh, to teach, and also going, uh, above and beyond by when, uh, when our, our legislature seems to think that they have a better, uh, better, uh, idea of how we need to teach, uh, math than, than, uh, what we do here at a local level. Um, going to bat for that innovative math teaching model and, and, and promoting that. Uh, that was one thing, and, and promoting innovation throughout our district and teaching is, um, a lot of different ways you could go with that. But that's one that, that is, is different, it is effective, and, uh, and provides results. I appreciate you taking a stand on that. Um, so, uh, I think, you know, from, uh, as a board standpoint, from, from, as a board member, I think, uh, uh, some of the areas as far as strategic planning and things of that nature, um, haven't given you the opportunity to succeed in, in, in those areas. And so, uh, hopefully as a board member and as, uh, as a board member, whether chairman or not, uh, can, can do some things to help you in that, that area, because that is how we are evaluating you on that. And it's not, it's not, uh, fair for us to evaluate on s- something that, uh, we're participating in, and we don't, uh, we could be more effective at. So, uh, so with that, that's just a few comments I'd like to just share with you and appreciate the fact that, uh, you have to get your evaluation public, and most people have the, uh, have the luxury of having evaluations done in private. So, I appreciate you, uh, you're, you're, you doing that and, and the way you, way you accept that. So, give you a chance, if there's anything you'd like to say.
I just want to thank the board for your time, and, uh, you know, you, you do a difficult job as well, and, and face a lot of, uh, yeah, feedback and criticisms as well. But I thank you for your time in, uh, in my evaluation and your confidence in me, and I thank the, uh, the county for the same. Uh, it's not a perfect school system, but it's a very, very good one, and it's be, mostly because of the people that, uh, I have the luxury of standing on their shoulders. Um, and, uh, I, I get to take credit for the really hard work that's going on in our schools each and every day. And so, I'm so thankful for those people, uh, and the job they do with kids. Um, you know, love kids, work hard, pursue excellence is not something that I just say. It's something that we try and emulate in our school system. Uh, most, almost all of the decisions that I make start with students first. That's not always popular with some big people, but, uh, that's always my main motivation. Uh, then we work really hard, and I try and be a good example of that, of working hard every day and being here and putting in the time and the effort. And then we pursue excellence, not perfection. There's no perfect school system out there, uh, perfect director or perfect school. Uh, but we, we try and get better every day, and when we mess up, we fess up and move on. And, um, so, um, you know, we, I'm really, I'm really proud of our school system. I'm, I'm proud of the accomplishment- our school system. I'm proud of the accomplishments that we've made. And I'm proud to lead the fine people that work here. Several things that we I need to work on and I made note of those and I appreciate that. You know, I appreciate the board sharing those things. And, you know, I think strategic planning is is one, and I think that that's something that I can use the board's guidance on. And I think the board shouldn't would want to be involved in and helping to guide that and not the other way around. So but I'll take all those things, all those things to heart and try and get better as we pursue excellence together. And I just thank the board for your your positive evaluation this evening.
Fowler?
I just want to say that I want to thank you and I want to make sure the public knows. I don't care what time I call this man. It can be eight o'clock at night if I've got a question about something and he answers his phone. If he can't get to it, he texts me and says, I'll call you back. I don't care if it's me asking a question about something or a parent has reached out to me. And I just want to say thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
Just just one. Ms. Douglas and Ms. Officer and I went to the orientation in October of last year at TSBA does. And there were a lot of good conversations that happened. But I think we quickly realized that that we have an outstanding school system here based on some of the other things that go on within this state. And and it starts at the top and it permeates through through that leadership, throughout the principals, the staff, the faculty. So I think we should consider ourselves very blessed.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other comments? Okay, if not, I entertain a motion to for a board approval of the 2425 director's evaluation as was scored. Motion by Mr. McDonald. I have a second. Second by Ms. Fowler. Any discussion on the evaluation scores? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is our district update. Mr. Drumberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try and be brief. Personnel reports in your folders, lots of employment transactions for this month, more than more than normal due to this being the retirement and hiring season for next year. We're currently interviewing qualified candidates for next year and most of the vacancies are filled right now, but we still have a few interviews to come. Legislatively, the General Assembly has officially adjourned session for the year. Now we'll adjust to the new laws and directives affecting affecting education. I will attend to toss legislative briefing next week and the school board will have their TSBA summer law conference in July. Academically, raw data from spring TCAP testing will return in the coming weeks, which will help us in making personnel decisions for next year. Full data reports in the fall semester, which will greater influence student decisions. Our pre TCAT TCAP test data was very promising and we're expecting good results on state exams. In the realm of safety, most of the door projects in the schools are complete, the door lock projects. Supervisor Brian Haley has conducted monthly cert meetings with our local responders and administrators. Much progress has been made in regards to safety in our schools. We are budgeting for further safety improvements in fiscal year 26. Financially, the general purpose school fund has continued a positive financial trend during the month of April. We anticipate this increase to be able to increase the fund balance at a similar rate as last year. And this is significant because we discussed at this this time last year about really trying to maybe take a close look at keeping our budget a little tighter than normal. And so it's we did that and it's good to see that we're still going to be able to positively contribute back to fund balance. So I think that speaks to the the good job that all of our folks have done in the schools at watching the pennies and dollars. Athletically, the WCMS softball team is in the sectional round, having a great season. WCMS golf is headed to the state. Congratulations to Coach Griffith over there. WCHS soccer just finished one of the best seasons in school history. Flag football had a great year. We had four athletes sign scholarships to play sports in college. WCH baseball had a strong finish to the school year or to the season. And a few other sports are still wrapping up their seasons. So some great sports going on in White County schools. As far as building projects go, the bid opening for bid opening meeting for the Doyle School project was on May 14, excuse me, is on May 14. That's when we opened the bid. Sorry, we did the project meeting. We're looking forward to this small addition to the school. At WCHS, Assistant Principal Scott Wilson and Science Chair Mr. Wesley Martin have secured a TVA learning environment grant in the amount of $25,000. And this money will go towards the purchase of a fume hood during the summer's science lab renovation. There are 8.5 days of school left. May 14 is baccalaureate service. May 15 is the Warrior Academy graduation. May 16 is White County High School graduation. Students are off on the 21st for a teacher internship and will report for an abbreviated final day to pick up report cards on May 22. So that's a brief summary of what's going on in the schools right now. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for our director over school's report?
Thank you for that report. I'm not sure it's eight and a half. It's probably more like 8.25, something. We have
According to the state, it's eight and a half. That's what I'm going to say on the record.
We'll go with that. We have several coaching vacancies right now. If you could talk to the board about how the process by which we go to recruit new coaches, the process by which we go to to hire them, do they have to be school employees or district employees to coach? If you could just give us some insight of that, please.
So we post our coaching vacancies, just like we do teacher vacancies or any job openings on a program called My Benefits Channel. And we so we post those publicly and take applications that way. Usually those are most of those decisions done at the building level, principals, unless I have something big picture from a district standpoint we need to address. We allow principals, supervisors to hold those interviews and select those candidates. And then we go about the process of checking background checks and references before they're recommended for hire. So we do the same process with coaches, except the athletic directors involved and works with the principals and some other team designees that may be on those on those interview teams to select those folks. They do not have to be school board employees. They do have to be background checked and vetted in that regard. We do give preference to folks that are in the system just because it gives us a little more control and and knowledge of who's with the kids at what time. But we have several great parent volunteers that are in and in our community and in our sports programs that are helping out. So I think I addressed everything that you asked.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our director?
Okay, if what I would like to do is, we do have a budget item that we need to address tonight, and that's summer school budget. It was provided in your packet that we budget for for summer school that will this these funds will be reimbursed to us by the state. Summer school program as a whole is $410,090.31 is what's budgeted to provide that that summer school. And that does run the month of June. And so so that is the the budget that is in place for that. So along with that, now that's that was for informational purposes of what that was going to be. As a from a board standpoint, we have to Just want to make sure I was clear. Learning camps would be the allocation for summer school, $410,090.31. But then we have the transportation component of that as well, $74,379.12. So all total roughly about $485,000, give or take. And that money will be coming reimbursed to us by the by the state. So that's the the budget for providing that service this year. And in addition to that, we have in our packet, we actually have the the district general ledger budget that we will have to approve for that's the allocation of these funds. So that that way they can go on and start summer school without waiting for us to have a special call meeting or and by the time we have our next board meeting, it would be too late to for those would be passed start the summer school. So they need to start with funds approved. So pause there. Any questions on the summer school budget?
How many students do we service pre-K through 12th grade?
Do you have an estimate, Dr. Butcher? But what is it?
I think your city had a few more than 15. It's more popular after a couple years ago. It's been down.
Is pre-K involved in the summer school, too? What what facility is the summer school at?
So we're at Finley and Middle School is where we where we held, yeah, the middle school. And then we have a very little bit going on at the high school as far as credit recovery, correct? But but we have the middle school, students are at the middle school and all elementaries are at Finley.
Is summer school just credit recovery or is it enhanced education?
No, it's enhanced for those. But we do do some credit recovery for high school students. So but that's part of our summer programming. But it's for the K8, pre-K8 students. It's it is enhanced education.
Any other questions regarding summer school? Okay, then this time, I'm going to entertain a motion for the approval of the for our Fund 141 general purpose school fund for the summer school program. The numbers in our budget ledger match the ones that were provided that were to the state for for the monies that would be we'd be planning for for this for this program this school year. So this time, I'd entertain a motion for that budget approved budget amendment approval.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Smith to have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McDonald. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is the one I look forward to each meeting and that's our student representative report. Ms. Sackett.
Thank you. I did want to just circle back around to what Mr. Smith said. Being able to serve on the Student Engagement Council under the Tennessee Department of Education, I get to hear from students all across the state of Tennessee, from really rural communities to super urbanized, populated, populized communities. And I'm very grateful for the school system that I'm enrolled in. And I did actually move here from across the country. So I've been in different school systems and got to witness what those are like, too. So I did want to say that I am very grateful for this school system and all the opportunities that it's given me. And with that, I have a pretty extensive student report this month. So I'm really excited. And Joy is not here. She's at a band concert. So the Science Club recently took an exciting field trip to the Lost Sea. So that offered students a really unique opportunity to learn about geology and the ecosystem and all that fun stuff. We're also really proud to announce that we received a TVA grant in the amount of $25,000. So that's really awesome. And additionally, Mr. Keith Brown's dual enrollment classes, we're able to attend a guest lecture from an Auburn University professor at Tennessee Tech University, so further enhancing their academic experience. We've continued our rigorous academic testing schedule with students participating in dual credit exams across three subject areas. On top of that, 10 AP tests are currently underway involving a total of 122 students. And we just did something new and really exciting called Warriors for Wellness. I am very blessed to be a part of that organization as well. So we had our fourth and fifth graders from all the elementary schools come to the high school. We got to teach them about the dangers of tobacco, what it does to their body. We got to have a digital footprint class. We had classes about stress and anxiety and what that really does to your body internally. So they got to learn a lot. And we also had an award-winning guest speaker that I actually got to listen to at Tennessee Strong Summit this summer. And he is super awesome. His name is Nathan Ray. And he got to speak to them and they absolutely adored him and loved it and learned a lot. So we were very excited about that and plan to build on that as the years come. And finally, we are thrilled to cheer on one of our students, Marion Swindle, who's going to be competing in the regional tennis tournament on Monday. So best of luck to her. I'm cheering her on. She's literally so awesome, guys. I'm not even kidding. She like gets out there and does her thing. She's so awesome. And last thing, I'm excited that our FFA officer team just had our interviews and we have our new team. So I was going to call them out, starting with Addie King. She's the senior vice president and also newly elected regional Middle Tennessee Regional Reporter. So that's a very big accomplishment and we're very proud of her. Hunter Rigsby is the junior vice president. Sam Teepol, sophomore vice president. Katie Eller as secretary. Olivia Hart, which is back there. She's treasurer. Reese Selby, reporter. Sam Burton Sentinel. Justin Cannon, student advisor. Landon Kerr is our chaplain. Riley Luna is our historian. And Madeline Savage is our parliamentarian. So we're very proud of everybody and excited for the new year of service.
Great report. Ms. Sackett, any questions for Ms. Sackett or student representative?
I just have a comment. I was able to attend the FFA banquet just last week, I guess it was. And it was just, it was excellent. It's student-led and it was very well attended and the students just did an excellent job. I was very impressed.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to touch a little bit on that. Our banquet was very successful. We had tons of students. And actually, when we went to the Middle Tennessee Awards banquet, we were awarded best in the whole state of Tennessee for SA category. So that's the supervised agriculture experiences and that's the student projects. So we were awarded the best district in that. So that's something to be very proud of because that is a reflection of the students that we have coming out of that organization.
Great. Any other questions, comments?
I think I'm very impressed with Ms. Sackett and her ability to lead. And she is very well spoken.
Echo that. So several years ago, and this was one that under Mr. McDonald's leadership and he pushed, recommended and the board adopted the student representative to be on be on our board. And through policy, we have a junior and a senior representative. And we're very fortunate that we have that in place and have the opportunity to have these reports and get the insight from from our from the student perspective. The the term for this, the students, it is a it runs from through the school year. So that'd be September would be your first after they have the nominations by the by the administration. And it runs through the school year. So in May, this would be actually the last meeting that that Ms. Sackett, it would be required to attend if you chose to come back at any other means the the rest of this term, June meeting, we would certainly allow you a seat at the table. But we this is would be the end of your required term. And so what we have for you tonight is a certificate of appreciation. And this certificate is proudly presented to Ms. Isabella Sackett in appreciation for your dedication to service as a student member on the White County School Board for the 2024-2025 school year, signed by myself, the chairman, and Mr. Day, the director. So Ms. Sackett, if you would come, I'd like to present this to you this time.
Mr. Chairman, I want to I want to say, too, just to add on to what you said, we are one of only about 15 school districts across the state that have student representatives. So not everybody is is getting the the knowledge that we are from inside the school, although the legislator tried to tried to push for every every district to have that. So I'm glad we're ahead of the curve on that. So thank you, Ms. Sackett, for serving. And we'll get Ms. McGill when she's here.
Ms. Fowler?
I just want to say thank you. You are amazing. You are so bubbly and I love it. Keep it up, girl.
I know you've got to you've worked with my wife in the in the program quite a bit. And I think if I hear how great Isabella Sackett is just one more time, I might. No, it's true. It's true. I agree with everything that she says and everything everyone else has said. You did a great job and thank you for representing White County schools so well.
And pleased to have in attendance tonight your your parents. And I see some smiles coming back there and a little heart shaped. You are very fortunate, well spoken, highly articulate and very well thought, thinks through her 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 comments and and subjects very well. So a lot of a lot of bright things in in your future, Ms. Sackett. And we appreciate you being on serving on the board. All right. If no other comments on our student representative report, that brings us to item 13 on our agenda, and that's public comment, public policy 1404 states that we allow time on our agenda for public to have them give them the opportunity to address the board. We do have tonight two individuals who've asked to be recognized. the board. We do have tonight two individuals who've asked to be recognized. Celine Bradley from District 7, Luke Teepel from District 6. Items that they would like to discuss would be our upcoming event, and so listed on order of, on the signup sheet, is Ms. Bradley here? Okay, Ms. Bradley, if you would, come to the microphone. Mr. McDonald, Vice Chair, will, will run the clock, but we will give you five minutes, and you can speak to the item you'd like to discuss.
First of all, good afternoon. My name is Selena Bradley, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I realize that my time is limited, and I have made some notes that I'm going to read from, so forgive me. However, I want to cover my position thoroughly while being very respectful of your time. I do realize that the school year is drawing to a close, and because of that, I felt like tonight was the best time to speak to you all as a board, as you are working, and I think it's already been stated tonight, that you are in the thick of the upcoming budget for the upcoming school year. I'm not here to reinvent the wheel, but to renew a request to add a 12-month contract for the two agriculture teachers at White County High School. I do believe that Mr. Ward had made this same request last year to Mr. Drumburger. Unfortunately, I think the timing of that request maybe came after the budget for the 25, I'm sorry, 24-25 school year budget had already been approved. However, I'm hopeful that you all, as a board, are open to considering it for the 25-26 school year. I do have some packets, if anyone's interested, or I would love to share them with you, that has some numbers in it. It shows the hours worked by Mr. Kyler Moore and Ms. Kimberly Eller from June 1st of 2024 through March 28th of 2025. It only goes through March 28th because I asked them specifically for their numbers on the 1st of April. So therefore, these numbers do not include April and May. During the timeframe, Ms. Eller worked 407.5 hours out of contract hours. 111 of those were worked during the summer of 2024. Mr. Kyler Moore worked 353.5 out of contract hours, with 104 of those worked during the summer of 2024. TCA Code 495416, subsection A, states, "Any person employed in a public high school as an agricultural education teacher may be employed on a 12-month contract or as recommended by the Local Agricultural Education Craft Advisory Committee. These contracts shall be subject to approval by the Local Board of Education." And I'm here tonight asking you all to consider approving that contract. And also, as a reminder, the federal funding through the Carl Perkins Act would cover the majority of the increase to the budget for that additional month. Subsection B of the same TCA Code 495416 further states, "All high school agricultural education programs that were 12-month programs for the 1992-1993 fiscal year or any fiscal year thereafter shall be maintained as a 12-month program by the Local Board of Education so long as a quality agricultural education program, as determined by criteria established by the Career and Technical Education Division of the Department of Education, is maintained." It is my understanding that at one time, White County did have the agriculture teachers on a 12-month program, or a 12-month contract. I'm not sure why or when that that was changed, and if I'm not mistaken, I believe that Mr. Tim Mackey was the last agriculture teacher to be on a 12-month program, or 12-month contract. But when he retired a few years ago, the same contract was not extended to our current agriculture teachers. I can assure you that our agricultural education program at White County High School is not only maintaining a quality education program, but an exceptional educational program. Our White County FFA chapter has won two three-star national awards, which signifies that the chapter not only meets the highest tier of standards set out by the Tennessee Department of Education, the White County chapter exceeds those standards. Mr. Moore and Ms. Eller have poured into our students. They've shaped our chapter into something that you all, as a board, should be proud of. White County had the largest group of students at the 97th Annual FFA State Convention back in March. Think about that for a moment. White County ranked number one in participation out of all 95 counties. I will close by asking you all to review the numbers yourself. You're welcome to these packets. Review the criteria that's enclosed for the 12-month contract, and do the right thing by reinstating the 12-month contract to our agriculture teachers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. If you set your information over there, I'll see that all board members get a copy of that before we leave.
I do only have three packets, but I'm happy to email packets to everyone.
If you, if you would mail, email that to Mr. Drumburger, and he can submit that to us, and- Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Teepel, recognize you? And again, you'll have five minutes.
I'm Luke Teepel. Said, I'm in District 6, I do believe. My grandfather, Louis Teepel, was served on your all's board back in the 60s, I do believe, and my mother was an educator till she retired in this organization as well. I'm here again with Ms. Bradley to recommend that Ms. Eller, Mr. Moore be on this 12-month contract. Heard that it's a proposed, that they're going to get a 2% because of a loophole. So if you all are wanting to approve a 2% loophole, you all are cheating these people. I do fit, I do believe that with all my heart, that if you all approve a loophole, that's cheating. Like Ms. Sackett said, they won the award at the Middle Tennessee banquet the other night. These two have, go to bat for these kids. They work during the summer. They work during the winter. When there's no school, they've got to come up and tend to the animals, to the farm, tend to the greenhouse to make sure everything's all right. Unlike some of these other, other clubs or groups, whenever there's no school, there's nothing going on. So again, I'd appreciate if you all were to consider this 12-month contract of their full pay instead of the 2% that is supposedly going to be presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teepels. For, I think for the record, for, for public's sake, board has not been presented with any budget numbers to, to consider, and that will be done at a later date. So, so board members, I'd just like for you to keep that in mind. We have not seen budget, and regarding, regarding funding of positions, that would be something that we'll discuss later this, this month. So when it comes to budget. We do appreciate the information that's shared. We'll make sure, Mr. D., make sure that we get that as we go, roll into, to budget season, but appreciate you coming and sharing your comments with us tonight. So next, next item on our, on our agenda is, in new business item, we did pull this. This is a budget amendment that came in late, but we do need to take, take action on tonight. We pulled that out of consent and put it in new business, so that way we could have informed and, and let Mr. D. speak to that, make sure we fully understand what it is we're being asked to approve.
Okay, so this budget amendment is for 21st Century. As we end the, end the year, we're shuffling $5,000 from the Supplies category into Instructional Materials. This is Fund 142, Subfund 432. And as we, and as, again, as we end the school year, just to make sure we're making the best use of those funds.
Okay, so board members, we've been asked to approve a, a transfer of funds in 21st Century Program, as they try to wind down the year for, with the funds and put them in appropriate place. So with, with that explanation, I would entertain a motion for, for approving the budget amendment for Fund 141, Subfund 432 as presented.
So move.
Motion by Mr. McDonald. Have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is old business, and there is no old business to report at this time. So that leads us into Chairman's comments. Our budget work session will be May 27th, 2025, 6:00 PM here at the White County Board of Education. That will be, that will be a work session. Following that will be a budget meeting on May 29th at 6 o'clock here at Board of Education. And then our next regular scheduled school board meeting will be June 12th, 2025, at the White County Board of Education. Just as a reminder, the, our graduate, our Warrior Academy graduation is next Thursday night, a week from tonight, followed up with our, our graduation for high school at, on Friday at the, weather permitting, at Warrior Stadium. So those are the comments, announcements I have. Next time, our agenda is for adjournment. So at this time, I'd entertain a moment for adjournment. Motion by Mr. Smith. Second. Second by Ms. Fowler. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Appreciate everyone being here tonight.